Somebody like to make a motion to go into executive session?
I'd make that motion pursuant to one MRSA, section 4056A, to discuss personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Somebody like to make a motion to come out of executive session?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, first thing on the list is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. So no presentations, we get a public hearing for the Narrows Tavern liquor license. Somebody like to make a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right. Is there any public comments? Don't everybody all run up to the podium? Seeing none, is there any select board comments? Seeing none?
Never any issues there.
Somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Somebody like to act on that liquor license renewal?
I move approval of the application for the liquor license for the Narrows.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Cool. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
The only thing that you have to add is your appointments to boards.
Okay, so you want to do that 10.3?
Yes, and I apologize, that was totally my fault.
Somebody like to make a motion for that change added?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
10.3.
I second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Any citizens' comments? Deprada?
And just say your name and your address for the record, please.
Steve Karp, 348 Friendship Road, Walterboro. Good evening, I think most of you know me. I would like to point out a couple of things about our public library that I think you as selectmen and residents of Walterboro should be aware of. And I think you should be aware of these two things because the town of Walterboro, that is, we, the taxpayers of Walterboro, give $75,000 a year to our library. If we didn't do this, I wouldn't be speaking to you right now. First, two points, first then. In September of 2020, after the lockdown restrictions had eased up a bit, I started volunteering at the Village Bookshop. We all know where that's at downstairs downtown. You know, yeah, you know where it's at. All the proceeds from their sales go back to the library to support the library, 100%. About a year later in 2021, Andy Lackoff, the president of the Library Board of Trustees, asked me if I wanted to be on the board. I said, let me think about it. I did, and about the beginning of 2022, I said yes. He said, great, and he told me to come up to the library to pick up my handbook. I did. Received an email from Kat Skoff on April 6th of last year congratulating me on being on the board and came, told me to come up and get the book, the handbook, which I did. April 13th of last year, a Zoom meeting was called. Little did I know that I would be the mainest topic of discussion for that meeting. The meeting started and an item came up to be voted on, I raised my hand and approval. Andy said, you can't vote, you're not on the board. I was, didn't say anything, but I was puzzled after having received that previous information. Then I asked Andy, I was asked by Andy if I was running for school board. I said, yes, he asked me if I wanted to ban a certain book, Gender Queer, from the RSU 40 libraries. I said, no, I don't want to ban anything. If you want to buy the book on your own dime, that's up to you, but the book is not age appropriate. Now, I want you to know that I'm not here to talk about the book, okay? I'm here to talk about the board's action taken against me because of my objections to the book being inappropriate for ages in RSU 40 schools. And here's the actions that they took against me. Andy asked me to leave the Zoom meeting and come back in 10 minutes. I did. When I came back, he said, we don't think that you'd be a very good fit for us. You're not very inclusive. To which I replied, well, I guess your definition of inclusive doesn't include those that have a different opinion than yours. As a friend of me, friend of mine said to me after I relayed this story to her, she said, Steve, nothing is more exclusionary than inclusivity. Second point is come to my attention that during my last campaign for school board, the librarian was telling patrons about how it would be awful for me to get elected to the school board. Let me see if I can get the exact quote here. My source said, I heard a librarian telling a patron how awful I would be, I would have been on the school board. And although Melvin, Melvin Williams is not a good school board member, he is better than Steve Karp. That's not just inappropriate, that's according to the American Library Association's Code of Ethics, unethical. So in sum, you as a select board of Walterboro should know that you send $75,000 of your money, our money, to an organization that, one, discriminates against conservatives like myself that hold to traditional values. And, two, has a librarian that uses her position to actively campaign against someone that she happens to disagree with. Now, I have a suggestion here. On the Town Report, page 76, we noticed on article 23 here, it has everything lumped under community service agencies, okay? My understanding is that one time, these were all separate line items on the budget. We could vote yes or no. So I would suggest that next year, we change that and we go back to way we were doing it. My comments are respectfully submitted. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ben Vale, 70, Philbrook Lane. Mine comes in the form of a question. As always, I'm just curious about where we're at with the 80 grade process.
It's a good thing you came tonight, because it's on the agenda.
Well, and I didn't bring my glasses, so you could put anything on there.
It's under 11.1, it's the agreement for the pilot for, the agreement and pilot for 80 grad.
It seems like every time.
So you have great ti, you have great timing, Ben.
Then I'll be quiet and sit down.
Your last issue that you brought to the select board, was that resolved?
Beats me, I don't know what it was.
The cleanup.
The cleanup.
It was in the process.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I thought it was probably taken care of.
And I had another issue you probably heard about, the police took care of up there too.
Yes.
Okay, any other citizens' comments?
I figured if it wasn't resolved, you would have called me.
Seeing none, we'll move on to select board comments. Bob?
I just have one comment. I'd like to express my appreciation to John Blachek, Bill Maxwell, and the entire committee that worked on the 250th anniversary. Your dad made a comment during the meeting the other night, he said, you know, this group has become more than just a group. These folks have established personal relationships with one another, they work well together, they constitute a team. And I think that's a reflection of the leadership of the committee, both vice president and the president. So a big thank you to everybody who's on the committee, especially their John and Bill.
Toblewood.
John?
Need to sweat from my brow. Just something minor. I want to thank the Public Works for the work they've been doing down at the new parking lot, which are also the striping and the parking in town. Just a question, I think there's some confusion on the front of the drugstore, the signs.
Yes.
That say pharmacy parking?
They're going to be taken down and replaced with the one hour parking. There is no business that has any parking on the public street. We were also ordered some no parking signs that will be in the striped area because people still have a problem with not understanding that those yellow lines mean don't park there. So those are coming from white signs, and the one hour parking rule will start being enforced because there is one hour parking only. And that should turn over traffic quite well.
That'll probably help with the winter, winter power.
Winter parking ban and also the parking lot in back, now that there's been some improvement to it and more to come, we're going to get a grant and make improvements. That should also help with alleviating some of the issues we have out front now. Again, that's not going to happen anytime, you know, in the next year. It should be like a year away till we can get the funding and start, but.
For the parking lot.
For the parking lot, but all the rest of it, the police put out actually quite a humorous post yesterday with some humor and factual post to encourage people's good behavior before any actions are taken to start truly enforcement action downtown.
I'm really glad to see there seems to be a lot of activity in the village, in those parking spots are being used, so if we take advantage. And just take the sign down in front of them.
Yes, that's what they're doing.
Because that's been up there over a year.
Actually, I don't think it's, hasn't it been that?
The drugstore put those signs up.
Has it been that long? Because I know the, the chief, I know the chief had went down and removed them once. I don't know if they're.
Oh, they're there. I see them every day when I go by.
I saw a picture about it.
People park in front of this, it says I can park here, it says pharmacy parking.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, obviously, we want people, that's why we added the handicap spot there because obviously a lot of people need that for the pharmacy. But now you can park in the back, I know it's a rough walk up that hill, but we are going to, to when we redesign the parking lot, move the handicap spots down on the opposite end, so it's less of an incline to come up and around through that little alleyway there. So that's where we're at with that.
One more thing, last week in Lincoln County News, there was a great article talking about the challenges of housing, there was a study that was done by Lincoln County. Everyone see that on the board?
I did not see it.
You didn't? Then I get your copy. You read it, I'm sure you read it.
Okay, I didn't see it, no.
I won't bore you with it, but it's basically telling us what we already know, the shortage of housing here in Lincoln County and how much it's costing. So it's a good article for us to look, and we talk about what can we do to bring businesses into town? And as we've experienced in the town, we have to have places for these people to live. And this is a result of it right here is because Lincoln County is hurting for affordable housing. Now, the reason why we're talking about the 80 grade today too, the affordable housing.
Actually, I have a comment about that too, and I don't know how many other people are in a similar situation as myself, but we own a cottage in town and we go through Airbnb. And a large portion of our decision about going to Airbnb rather than renting the cottage to, you know, permanent long-term residents is because of the laws in this state that are just so anti-land board. And we may go back, the situation is critical, the housing situation is critical. We're going to shut down, I'm going to be doing some work on the cottage this, this fall. We haven't decided whether we're going to go back to Airbnb or not, or whether we're going to do a long-term rental or not. I would like to go long-term rental, just to provide an additional house in this town. But we are having a hard time weighing, you know, the difficulties that landlords go through, can go through.
And that's addressed in this article as well.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, didn't mean to take your time.
That's all I have.
Okay, I have one other comment then. Steve, thank you for bringing up what you said at the very end. I was surprised when there was one line item for, I think it was five different, 503 organizations. And I guess there was one other line item and I'm.
It's community, it's community services and I forget the title of the other one. But they are, they are all lumped together and have been since, that's been since you went from town, the town went from town meeting to.
Referendum.
Referendum.
That's been a long time.
It's been like that. I mean, if you guys want to, if the budget committee and the select board want to take those items out individually, that's, I think that's within your purview.
I think that's a wonderful idea, you know, I probably would have voted for all of them, but there have been other things going on in the town recently that have gotten, I've gotten a lot of emails about, one in particular. I think giving our taxpayers, you know, the right to give to whom they want to give rather than tying it to some other things that are really necessary and worthwhile. I think giving the town taxpayers the option of picking and choosing which charities they want to give to is a good idea.
I can, I can double check with MMA, but I think that's something that the select board slash budget committee can decide, that's my understanding. But I would just ask for one meeting, another meeting, I can report back and let you know what they say. I don't know if that, I don't think that has to go. No, but I do think that, I do think that's within your purview to structure the warrant the way you see fit.
Yeah, should make a few adjustments to that, as far as if somebody doesn't put in, we would just usually give money out even if people weren't applying for it, like either the Red Cross or some other organization like that. And we went to, if you're not applying for it, you're not going to get it. So I think we changed, changed the policy.
I think that was in 2019 that started, and we also started requiring, like LCTV comes every year and makes a presentation, so. And everybody's always welcome, that's the one thing I want to point out because I know this has been a topic. Everybody is welcome as the public to come to our budget committees and no public ever comes. It's always the budget committee, the select board, and I would love the public to come and see this because I think our town is very fortunate to have such an active budget committee and that process that we go through is very thorough and they meet year round. These aren't just a three-meeting committee, and they're an elected committee too. They meet whenever, you know, we need them to, I call them up and say, hey, we're talking about bonds, we're talking about all kinds of things and purchasing ambulances and capital improvements and billing issues, and they're here. And, you know, I hope they realize they're going to be busy this fall too because, you know, we've got the school bond, that 81 million, I think, is what they're going to put before the voters. I have a feeling that the budget committee will be involved in that too, so please come. All are, all are welcome and it's a great process, and I'm very proud of that process as you can tell because I think it's come a long way since 2017. I'm not taking any credit for that.
How many does his report?
I'm going to start off my first part of my report, and I'm going to let Pam address everybody because we have a softball team that's quite amazing that you need to hear about.
So my husband is coaching with two other coaches, girls in an 11, 12 softball team, all-star, and they are playing in the state championship tomorrow night, and we're at 5:30. They haven't lost a game yet, knock on wood, and if they win, they will have the opportunity to go to. Yeah, is it regionals or nationals?
Regionals.
Regionals in Bristol, Connecticut, so it's quite exciting. It's the first little league team, I believe, in Walterboro that has advanced up ours, so. I'm sure you'll see the results on Facebook tomorrow night if you don't want to be in time. It's quite, it's quite exciting.
Pam was real excited about that this morning.
It's nice to, you know, my husband's been coaching for a long time, so it's, hopefully, maybe we'll go out on a big bang.
And I just want to point out that her husband, and her husband is coaching, and Pam has taken charge of the concession stand, and they don't have any kids involved in the program anymore. They did that out of the goodness of their heart because Marcus, our rector, rector, asked them to, and they did it and didn't even think twice about it, so. One thing I just wanted to mention is we've been getting a lot of calls about some of the cemetery upkeep in town, and it's been a topic on some social media. And I just wanted to let everybody know that the towns are not in charge of the cemeteries here. All we do is hold the money in trust, and the trustees of the cemetery are the ones that arrange for maintenance, and then they schedule the maintenance and we pay the bill for them because we hold their money as the towns, most towns in Maine do. So if a cemetery is not up, the upkeep of the cemetery gets behind, you can call the town office and we'll put you in charge of the, in touch with the trustees, but I wanted everybody to be aware that there's, I can't expend their funds, I can encourage them to cut their grass more, but at the same token, I don't have any legal authority to order them to do something. It's their board. We can encourage them all we want and let them know what funds are available so that they could potentially cut it more than what they currently are. We do have an obligation for our veterans' graves, which I've discussed with John Deggel. But we also, I just want people to be mindful, it's not something that we don't care about, but it's something that I can't really impose, you know, my thoughts on it and say, this needs to be cut and it has to be done now. We also did find out that in a case of two cemeteries, they were in the process of getting cut, but the person who was cutting them believed that cutting them when it was so wet, because we had so much rain and everything just, and then we had sun and everything popped up, it was just so wet that there would have been ruts created that they just got behind. So some of it, some of them had been cut already, and then with all the rain and then the sun, it just grew so fast, and then it was just too wet to cut without leaving damage to the cemetery. So I just wanted people to be aware of that because I know that was a big item. And the other, two other things I had was I just wanted to give a big shout out to Peg, our finance director, and to Rose Roy, our tax collector. Year-end went very smoothly, they came in last Friday and did the year-end close, was it last Friday? No, it was the year, the week before. And also, we do have a request to, from the Board of Assessors to schedule an abatement for Mr. Hall's abatement. He would like to have a meeting, I didn't know if you wanted me to set that up for the next select board meeting or the first one in August.
You have the chairman.
We can do it at 5:00 if you would like.
6 o'clock is fine if we can fit it in? Or does it have to be?
Well, typically, we start our regular meeting at 6:00. We either do it before the regular meeting or after.
Okay, so it's not a line item in the agenda?
Yeah, no, it's a separate agenda.
Okay, yep, any day, any, any time, either time is fine. I'm retired.
Okay.
Bob?
I do have a question on that, and maybe it's premature, but I'll ask it anyway, slap me down if you want to. My, so my understanding that the situation was resolved when the property changed hands.
So a payment was made.
So is he asking for a refund?
It would be, yes.
Okay, just want to make that.
Yes, and it would be, that would be the proper, this party would be the proper party to receive that refund of the abatement. Or receive the abatement, not a refund of the.
The new owner gets the abatement?
No, the previous owner would get the abatement.
Came out of the sale, right?
Came out of the sale, so. That's, I think, what puzzled because we were, it was paid, so I thought it was, like the tax collector thought it was a moot point, so.
So it's not an abatement issue, it's a refund issue?
Refund.
Well, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
It's in a, it's a refund of an abatement.
Yeah.
Of a, no, it's a refund of a.
Of an overpayment.
Of an.
Potentially, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated, but.
It's really weird.
We're putting it under an abatement because that's, that's where it should fall, but yes. Because the abate, the, the fine was paid and he's requested an abatement of the fine, so, but I will schedule it for 5 o'clock at the next select board meeting.
Okay.
So Board of Assessors, which you cannot participate in.
Right. You're all set?
I'm done, that's enough.
We will not consent calendar. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Good. Your business. Committee appointee, application, committee application, sorry.
I'll kick that off.
Go ahead.
We met, Mike and I both met with Jim Letney last night. He put an application in to be a member of the Sylvania Committee. We, at least I enthusiastically recommend Jim. Jim's been around the town for a long time, even has a teacher in school, and I'm sure he'd like to hear that one. And he's a member of the Walterboro Recreation Committee right now, and he wants to be part of the Sylvania Committee because obviously we want to, there's some tie in there. And I think Jim would be a great asset, be part of that committee. I would recommend him for that committee.
Do you just want to add him to the board appointee appointments?
Yes.
The list we got at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes. No, that's a new one, right? That's committee application.
Oh, just the application, oh, okay. So you guys haven't, you interviewed?
Yeah, we've interviewed him, so.
So do you want to put?
We want, we want to appoint him.
Tonight?
Tonight.
We got a list of people.
I'd make the motion to appoint Jim Letney to the Sylvania Development Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
We also met with Stephen Carmichael tonight. Stephen has put a application to be a member of the Board of Appeals. Steve is a longtime employee of the Two Rivers Regional Jail over in Wiscasset. He deals a lot with state codes and ethics, and he's also on the advisory committee for the Criminal Justice Academy, lives here in town and wants to be involved, and he feels that his background dealing with appeals issues at work in, in his career would definitely be beneficial to the town. And I enthusiastically recommend to appoint him to the Appeals Committee.
I agree with that and was quite impressed with him. Just the type of personality you would need for this sort of position, very pleasant person, patient person.
Is there a motion?
I'd move that we add Stephen Carmichael to the list of board appointments that we'll be taking up later in the meeting tonight under Appeals Board, so there'd be two.
Okay.
Candidates for that board.
All right, is that it? The motion is on the table.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Appointments of the town manager.
So as you know, every year, as the town manager, I make some municipal appointments. As I do every year, I have one correction on the items that were presented to you, the appointments that were presented to you. I had Jeff Fuller, patrol officer, listed under items five, Police Department. Jeff retired, I guess I miss him, so he was, he was left on. And I'd also like to make a deputy building inspector, deputy code enforcement officer, and deputy licensed plumbing inspector appointment of Mark Stoltz. And Stan Walts, as you know, is retiring June, July 30th, so I just wanted to make Mark his deputy at the current time. You don't have to vote on that, I'm just letting you know the appointments.
All right, appointments to boards, 10.3. We got a list in front of us.
And these would be Planning Board Brendan McGurall till June 30th of 2026, Jeff Erskine June 30th of 2024, on the Shellfish Committee, Zach Melvin and Lee Bennett to June 30th 2026. The Recreation Committee would be Kelly Burton and Trevor Redinger until June 30th of 2026. The Appeals Board Elizabeth McCormick till June 30th 2026.
And Steve Carmichael.
Steve Carmichael would be a staggered term, so they would, he would be till June 30th of 2025.
Is Jeff Erskine's appointment also a staggered appointment, Julie?
Jeff Erskine agreed to do one more year.
Okay, I hate to lose him.
Well, but he agreed to do one more year.
Yeah, no, that's good. Not two more years, three more years.
One more year. One more year. I'm honoring his wishes.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those appointments?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, cool. All right, guess we're on to old business.
Very old business.
The AD Gray.
Very old business.
AD Gray. Some of the boss lady must.
Pulling it up. So this has been a long time in the making. I don't know if you remember what year it started technically, 2018, correct Max?
Volunteers of America?
Volunteers of America.
Volunteers of America is 2020.
2020, okay. 2020. 2018 is when we started discussing about what to do about AD Gray with me at least, and I know that discussion predated my existence here in town as Town Manager. So this was a very thorough discussion over the years that started many years ago. And what you see before you tonight is the final version of the option agreement, which I'm not going to go through the whole history of this, but there were many reiterations of this and this is where we've landed. And basically what this does is it, it essentially turns AD Gray over to Volunteers of America to build the 30, up to 36 units of affordable senior housing. I will say that things have, different programs have come and gone since we started this, since we started it so long, I mean, you don't think it's that long ago, but it really is that long ago. And I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to Max Johnstone. Max really did a yeoman's job on working with Volunteers of America as the Town Planner, but also coming up with out-of-the-box thinking about funding for the demolition of the school. I just want to reiterate that this went to the voters multiple times on ballots before this was arrived at. So this is where we're at. I know we've been over this several times now as a group and over it as the attorney's been over it, their attorney, our attorney, our Select Board. And this is where, where we're at and we will be.
So basically in the final stages.
We're in the final stages. We are. And Max, did they give you a potential date to start demolition?
Yeah, I'll be cut off from, I talked with Brian a bit earlier today about this. First of all, he's fine with the draft that includes all the notes that were made by the Select Board. The only change that they'll make is the option agreement made and entered into as of the day of, it'll be January 1st, 2024. That's the day they need to kind of put in stuff because. In terms of demolition, they're going to still aim for a mid-fall. They have to just finish up some things with CDBG to help pay for the remediation and the demolition. And once that's all set, then they're going to go out to bid the demolition crew and they're hoping that that will be all done before the end of fall.
And we got the grant for that, correct?
Yes, that was through the community development block.
We got the grant for that.
So the option exercise will occur after the first of, or before the first of next year, is that, is that the suggestion?
I believe that's what Brian said.
Okay, so while it's under demolition, the town's still going to own it and we have insurance to cover ourselves. So just want to make sure that the ownership actually doesn't transfer or convey until after they've exercised the option under this.
I'll confirm all of that with Brian and our attorney.
Okay.
You raised an issue that is, is sort of oblique in the agenda. Volunteers of America is going to own this facility after it's constructed, is that correct? Who is, what is the entity that is going to own it?
Volunteers of America will own.
They will own it.
They will own it.
And we will be getting payments in lieu of taxes?
One and a half percent of their profit. I believe that's, hold on. I want to quote that. Subject to the approval of grantee's lenders, investors, grantor and grantee shall enter into agreement, it's called a pilot agreement, that they will be providing payment by grantee to grantor of not more than 1.5% of all operating revenue from grantee's operation of the project.
Okay. And that's operating revenues, not net profit.
Right.
So that's an easy number to get to.
And that would be for here in Waldboro, not all of there.
Understood.
Have you figured out what that number?
Well, we, I feel recall when we were discussing that.
I do, because you may not have them all full at the same time.
Well, we wanted, you, because you wanted it to grow as rent grew. So this ensures that as rent grows, the income grows and you're not stagnant just settling on one price. So it will grow as, as the profit grows, the tax payment, well, the in-lu payment for taxes grows.
Go ahead, Bob. I have two points to make to Mike regarding your question. The ownership will vest in a, a VOA subsidiary, an LLC, for I think about 15 years, so that that LLC can benefit from the tax credits that will be obtained.
Correct.
Given the way they structure the deal with main housing. Okay, that's the first point. The second one is that this agreement that Max has put together, I don't think it can, I think it contains every single item that the committee, the AD Gray's committee came up with and wanted to have in this agreement, one of which was the revert clause.
The revert?
The revert clause.
Okay.
So that if for any reason this thing goes south, it goes back to the town.
We're made whole.
And that's subject to lien holders that will come on board after they arrange the financing for this.
Right, this was the original option agreement that the committee worked on and then went to their attorney, came back to the committee, then it's been through, I mean, we've had this going for two years now, I believe. But it is, like I said, Max, Max did a yeoman's job as our Town Planner on this and we really do appreciate him. And I wanted to say, too, that the historic aspects and the, help me.
Time capsule.
Time capsule. Everybody's aware of the time capsule and of the AD Gray school sign and everything, so.
So Ben, I would expect potential excitement and work going on this fall.
I'm looking forward to new neighbors.
And not just an empty building.
Yes, and not, not a, not a invite for mischief.
Yep, vandals and stuff. Well, cool. Anybody else?
Well timed that article in Lincoln County News and this tonight.
Yeah. Seeing none, is there any other items for next meeting's agenda?
Did you vote on that?
Do we need a?
Do we need to vote on this?
I would like a motion to approve.
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the option agreement for AD Gray and Volunteers of America?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Get her down.
Are we?
It's been a long road.
It's been a very long road.
It's going in the article.
But I have to say, and I, I have to say, it was a contentious at times, it was a contentious at time, at time, process. But I was always, and I continue to remain impressed with the voters of the town who, you know, came out and spoke their minds and everybody, I, and, and the level of even on, on both sides, the level of passion. And that's what you want in a community, you want a passionate community that, you know, everybody gets their chance to speak and be heard. And I, I thought that the Select Board did a great job of that.
Cool. All right. Any items for the next meeting to put on the agenda?
Slovenia update. Slovenia property update, right? We talked about that last meeting.
We will, and I'll give you a brief update right now if you don't mind. I should have done it in my town report, Town Manager Report, but we had a Slovenia Committee meeting yesterday. They made a motion to, to suggest to the Town Select Board that you allow the Town Manager to put out an RFP for the deconstruction and sale of the house, Hofstra's House itself, not the property, but to see if there would be any interest in someone coming in, deconstructing the house and then taking it away and rebuilding it someplace else. So that is what the committee recommended to you. But there was some discussion about, does that have to go to the voters or not? So I had to ask, I went first to the MMA for their guidance because Bob thought, well, we're in charge of gifts and that was a gift, but that doesn't fly. But my question was, can we sell this on gov deals as, because it's not property. It's, it's the house that sits on property. So that is the question that I have put out to MMA. I will hopefully have that answer for the Slovenia Committee and for you by the next meeting. It might be better to have the Slovenia Committee come in on the first meeting in August versus next meeting, just because we would have an answer by then. And they also might have a conceptual plan for you, if you wouldn't mind waiting.
Bob? Okay, it's an August meeting? Go ahead, Bob.
Well, he might mind.
No axe to grind, but I'm just wondering in order to speed the process up, because the committee voted for the recommendation unanimously, is my recall, right? That we make the motion to go out with the RFP, subject to your being satisfied with the responses you get from legal counsel on whether or not we need to go to the voters to do this.
So that's just a delegation of authority to, to the Town Manager.
To Julie, yes. Yes, to go ahead with the process, assuming that she gets a green light from.
That we don't have to go to the voters for approval to sell the actual building dismantled.
Yeah, that, that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion on it?
Just so everybody's clear, the Slovenia Committee received an offer from someone who was willing to dismantle the building and take it down, but it would cost the town $25,000 to do that because they had a buyer for the house that would then be reconstructed someplace else. So the committee felt like maybe there's other interest out there where somebody might say, we'll pay you to take the house or it won't cost you anything to take the house and we'll deconstruct it and send it off. And then it's repurposed.
The only discussion I'll add is, let's just do it.
As long as it don't cost.
As long as it don't cost anything. Again, we don't want to keep kicking this can. Like I appreciate Bob saying, let's just do it now. We keep kicking the can, before we know it, it's like a building on the hill.
I've been saying forever, we don't want to demolish this building by neglect. Let's try and save.
Okay, so Nick, you can vote now.
Yep, all in favor?
Okay.
That's a duty charge.
So then the Slovenia Committee, I guess, can come at the next meeting, but I, but they still won't probably have that cons, the concept plan down to talk to you about.
Yeah, you're going to get Barbara to come in and.
Yeah, so I, I think you might want to wait till the meeting in August.
First meeting in August.
Max, what do you have for the next meeting? Because I'm sure you always have something.
Which is the eighth.
No, July, the next meeting in July, do you have anything?
Do you have anything for the next?
Pam's checking her file.
Just said Slovenia, so.
Cool.
I'm sure we'll have something for you.
Yep, well, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I can.
All those in favor? Under an hour.